Good evening, everybody. It's always good to see the room full. It is. It always makes us feel like, you know, somebody cares. Somebody's hearing us. So, thank you for coming. No, no. I gotta take it in as long as I can. Welcome to the May 8th, 2023 Board of Education meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Thank you. The first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any written communication?
We have no written communication this evening.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is student recognition. There's the DECA International Competition winners.
Well, I'm going to ask Jenny Weber and Mitten Patel to come and present our DECA Award winners. It's always a great night at a school board meeting when we can honor students in any way, particularly tonight with DECA. So Jenny and many of you all can come over here to the podium and let's congratulate our students.
You guys can come on up. Yep, all the students come on up if you just want to like line up facing the board. Don't be shy. They won't bite.
All right, good evening. It is with great honor that I am able to stand here before you to recognize these students who have dedicated so much of their own time in DECA. These students started working on their 20-page marketing research plans and community awareness projects or 10- to 20-page business plans within the first two weeks of school even starting. They dedicated their lunch periods, free periods, coming in before and after school to work on these projects. In January, these students began to practice their presentations with me, starting as early as 7:30 in the morning. They have spent time before and after school taking practice tests and practicing their role plays in preparation for competition. As you might know, DECA is a high school competitive business club where students can compete in role plays and written competition. This past March, 28 students attended the Illinois Career Development Conference in Rosemont that hosted over 1,500 high school students from Evanston Township High School. I had the pleasure of working with 12 of these students individually on their marketing papers, community awareness projects, as well as their entrepreneurship plans. It is my pleasure to notify you that of those 12 students, all 12 placed in the top 10 and all 12 placed in top 3 in their event at the state competition.
Nice.
In addition, we had seven students placed top 10 in their role play event. Five of those students placed in the top 4 at state. Those five students, along with the 12 written winners, earned the opportunity to compete at the international competition that hosted over 18,000 high school students from across the United States, as well as from other countries such as Mexico, Guam, Spain, China, and Germany in Orlando, Florida.
Congrats to the role plays as well.
The following individuals earned a mini award at the state competition in March. Theo Wu took first place in his cluster exam for Principles of Business Management. Aiden Levine earned a second place in his cluster exam for Principles of Business Management. Max Low earned third place in his role play for Principles of Business Management. Mateo Solis earned first place in role play for Marketing Communications. Stav Davidson and Lane Currie earned third place for their role play 2 in Hospitality Service Management Team Decision Marketing Event. The following individuals placed top 10 overall in their event at the state competition. Joe Jurovchko placed top 10 in Sports and Entertainment Marketing Individual, earning 8th overall. Eddie Green placed top 10 in Principles of Hospitality and Tourism, earning 5th place overall. Due to an individual who placed 4th and was not able to attend the international competition, Eddie was offered to compete at the international competition in their place. The following are the results for both the state and international competition. These individuals placed in the top 4, earning a spot to compete in the international competition in their individual competitive role play event. Theo Wu took first place in Principles of Business Management at state. Theo earned international competency recognition, meaning he earned at least an 80% or higher in his role play and test. So those students who earned competency are now going to be receiving their international competency certificate. Max Low took second place in the Principles of Business Management at the state competition. Max earned international competency recognition, meaning he earned at least an 80% or higher in his role play and test. Josh Rhine took third place in Principles of Marketing at the state competition. Josh earned international competition recognition, meaning he earned at least an 80% or higher in his role play and test. Mateo Solis took third place in Marketing Communications at the state level. Mateo earned international competency recognition, meaning he earned at least an 80% or higher in his role play and test. So those are the role play individuals for the state international competition. The following are the results for the state international competition for the written events. These individuals had to place in the top 3 at state in order to earn a position to compete at the international competition for their written event. Mateo La Paglia took first place at state in Franchise Business Plan, focusing in on franchising Pono Ono Polke and setting it up in Glenview, Illinois. Mateo earned international competency recognition, meaning he earned at least an 80% or higher in his event. Caleb Gerstein and Eli Kaplan took first place at state in Business Operations, Sports and Entertainment Marketing, focusing in on Bold Gym and working on a hyper-personalized approach with their current customer base. Lane Currie and Stav Davidson took first place at state in Hospitality and Tourism Operations Research Event, focusing in on Comida Cantina and working on a hyper-personalized approach with their current customer base. Maya Thadani and Kathleen Carrasco, sorry, did I say that wrong? Took first place at state in Business Service Operations Event, focusing on Paramount Plus and working on a hyper-personalized approach with their current customer base. Campbell Fleming and Monroe Stroth took first place at state in their community awareness project where they created an online platform to discuss racial inequality within the Evanston community. Campbell and Monroe earned international competency recognition, meaning they earned at least an 80% or higher in their presentation and written event. Natalia Chick and Ellie Newmark took first place at state in their independent business plan where they developed a business called Fastly Feminine that targeted females and created a monthly subscription box for females and their monthly needs. Natalia and Ellie earned international competency recognition, meaning they earned at least an 80% in their presentation and written event. Maisy Peter took third place at state in her event Startup of Business, where she created a business called Shear, and individuals could purchase or rent out Indian clothing for various occasions. Maisy earned international competency recognition, meaning she earned at least an 80% or higher in her presentation and written portion. Pictures and videos of their experiences at state, as well as international competition, can be found on the ETHS DECA Instagram page. That's a little social media plug for you all. So congratulations to you all. On a final note, I would like to thank my co-advisors, Chris Manila and Mitten Patel. Their work with the role play individuals has been outstanding. Looking at the last few years, we have not had many students advance with role play, last year being our first one in quite a while. This year, with five students advancing, their work with preparing the students has truly been remarkable. I also would like to thank you, the board, as well as the parents, for allowing us to continue to run DECA here at Evanston Township High School. The opportunities, as well as the experiences that these students get from the conferences are truly amazing and something that I hope that they will look back on. So thank you again for your continuous support.
All right, before you leave, students, congratulations. We are going to give you a pin. So you're going to come around, the board's going to stand, we're going to come around, we're going to either shake your hands, give you a fist bump, whatever you're comfortable with, and give you a recognition pin for all of your hard work and your accomplishments. So once again, can we give a round of applause for our students and their sponsors and parents? So come on around and... You all can start with Annie and just come on.
Congratulations.
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 All right, yeah. We have a lot of very exciting business coming up, but DECA parents, students, and families, you are free to go if you shall wish, all right? Have a good evening.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Oh, oh. Nicole.
Clear it out.
I know. Always don't have some.
Yeah.
All right. That's very impressive. It's really awesome. Okay. I love starting meetings like that. Yeah, that's great. Okay, so we are at item number six, comments from the public. Dr. Beavis, do we have any comments?
There are no comments from the public this evening.
All right. Okay, so moving through our agenda, we are at item number seven. So we have a few FOIA's in our packet.
We have seven. We have one from Goba, one from Andelman, one from Hayden, one from Hirsch, one from Lee, one from Harper, and one from Siebold, and their sponsor in your packet.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, so item number eight, organization of the board. The first item here is recognition of retiring board member. We have a board member that's retiring. The word retiring is a little weird. So it's been our custom to kind of just say a few words about you, and I've prepared a few things, and then I'll just open it up for board members to say what they want to say. So Stephanie, I'm going to take an opportunity to tell you how much I appreciate you serving and your service to the board, to the community. You've served students, you've served teachers, and your community as a whole. It's really been an honor to be on the board with you. And, you know, I want to acknowledge, of course, over the years, we haven't always agreed, you know, and our board doesn't always agree because we have different personalities and different perspectives, and that's okay. So we've had some disagreements, but you've always put students first, and that I really appreciate. We spoke respectfully, we listened to each other's perspective, so we modeled this way to have these conversations, and that's been really great. So during those times that we didn't all agree, I kind of said we found a way to disagree without being disagreeable. So that's good. I just appreciate your commitment and your dedication to pursue what's best for students and what's best for our district. That's always been in your heart, and that came through throughout the years that you've been with us. We've had probably the most challenging years, you know, going through, I hate to say the pandemic, but, you know, we went through that. That was the most challenging years that any of us would have had to even anticipate. So, and we came through. And you were a key part of keeping our board unified. I feel like we're a unified board. We're engaged in productive deliberation toward being an effective governing board. So I really want to say it is my pleasure this evening to say thank you, to you, for your years of service to the ETHS board. You've been wise, you've helped us develop as an effective and functional board team. You remember that team of eight? You know, we've been a team of eight, and so we will miss you, Stephanie, and I wish you the very best. So who's next? That's it. Yes.
To read this a little bit off my phone. To be honest, I thought that Stephanie would be around for more than one term, so this farewell seems sort of sudden, even though it's been four years. I'm sad to see her go, but excited for her new adventures as she wraps up her advanced degree at Northwestern while juggling her work there and still finding time to spend with her adult daughter. I also hope she manages to find some more time to enjoy lake swimming this summer. A fun fact about Stephanie that I did not discover until we found each other floating in the lake at Lee Street Beach. I did not know Stephanie at all when she joined the board, so she was very much an unknown quantity to me. The bulk of her service came during the pandemic, which you already mentioned, which was not an easy time for schools, even ones as strong as ETHS, and it was not fun or easy to serve on the school board during that time either. Despite those difficulties, Stephanie's always contributed thoughtful comments and inquiry during our meetings, both closed and open. I've been continuously impressed by her patience and her active listening skills. Those are tough skills to develop in such a public role as the school board, more so in a passionate community like ours. She did a great job jumping into this work, has been a consistent and persistent voice for our students, particularly students of color and others who are marginalized. I thank you for your service, and I know I'll be seeing you around Evanston. Thanks, Stephanie.
Well, Stephanie, I agree with everything that's been said thus far. I think it really, it is a special person who decides to do this job and to put themselves out there, to step up. I mean, we all love ETHS, lots of people in the community do, but it is definitely something different. Takes an extra special something to make that commitment. And so I'm really grateful that you did four years ago, and I think that, you know, serving with you has been a privilege. It's been interesting, as everyone has already said, which I also was talking about, I wanted to talk about, is that it's been an incredibly challenging time to be involved in any school and to be a school board member. Not, I mean, certainly the pandemic and all the other things that we've dealt with in tandem and as a result of. And I think, again, that a special person will take that on, and you didn't know we were going to have a pandemic, but you certainly rose to the occasion, and I think our students have benefited and our district has benefited. And I think that as a board, you know, I always say we're the best board in town. Sorry, the rest of the boards in town. But I really mean that because I feel like we come together and we work together with a very singular mission, and that is our students and the staff that support them. And so I feel like you've done that throughout these last four years, and I think that the strength of our board isn't based on any one of us, but based on all of us. And if everybody's pulling that weight, it really makes a difference, and so you certainly have done that. So I really appreciate your willingness to do this, to step up, and the way you did it, and the way that you continue to make us a strong work together so that we are a strong entity, especially during these more challenging times. So it's been great to serve with you as a person individually, as well as as a whole and serving with us, and I know you'll go on and do lots of great things from here, and I look forward to seeing you around town. So thank you very much for everything.
Stephanie, thank you so much for your service on the board for the last four years. I have valued your sensitivity and your insight into student matters, always asking thoughtful questions and bringing new perspectives to our discussions. I appreciate your ongoing commitment to the students of ETHS and your ability to work collaboratively with the school board. I've also enjoyed your humor, your friendship, and your positive outlook. I'm wishing you all the best as you complete your master's degree and hoping that you'll have more time to swim in the lake and to garden. And lastly, thank you for the many rides to the school board meetings that you've given me. I've always enjoyed chatting with you in our car rides, and for those who don't know, Stephanie and I are neighbors. We live four houses away from each other, so you are welcome to come hang out on my patio anytime.
And you too. Hello. So I remember being in this room watching you run four years ago, when I just wanted to come here because I knew a couple of the candidates, and so it's kind of interesting now to be able to have been seated next to you or, you know, at the table and to serve with you. And one of the things that I keep thinking about is the gathering that I was honored to be a part of in your home and how it just reflected your, just your friendships and your diversity of people that you have, and it was such a beautiful moment, and I just, I really valued that, and then I could see that come to life in your questions and the way that you were a part of our board. So I love that, and thank you for having me in your home. And I also think about the ways in which we discuss things in our retreats, and I thank you for your curiosity and your calm. There's a really special way of being that I think has helped us, and so thank you for that. And good luck. I mean, it's going to be fun, whatever you're doing next, so good luck to you. Yeah.
So you remember our conversation at Collectivo? You were convincing me to run, right? Because I had doubts, I had questions, and I was like, oh, Stephanie, I don't think so. I think, you know, this might be it. And she was like, no, Monique, no, you got to do it, and I don't know what happened. I mean, I don't know what happened. You didn't call me, you didn't let me know, you know. But what I appreciate about you, Stephanie, and we ran together four years ago, didn't know each other, but what I appreciate about you is your willingness to have courageous conversations. And not too many people would step into that space and leave it there, like we don't talk about what we talk about, right? And we talk about things, we disagree on things, we come to a common place about misunderstandings. We learn from each other. And I believe that started when we started campaigning together four years ago, quietly, like under the current, right? And so that's always, I don't know, that gives me hope because, like we all said, we don't have to, we shouldn't all think the same way, right? I think that's the strength of this board, but we should be able to talk about it. And you and I have done that over and over again, right? So I appreciate that most about you and will miss that ability to be able to do that. I mean, but you're not dying or nothing, right? Okay. So, and I know you will stay in touch, but I truly appreciate that about you. And you're doing something I thought I wanted to do, and that was retire off this board. So tell me how it is. All right? Tell me how it goes. But yeah, good luck. I know, wish you the best and good luck. Yes.
So would you like to speak?
I just want to say a few things.
Okay, you can.
I just want to say how much I appreciate all of you and how much I've learned from all of you. I had been sort of working sort of at the very grassroots level, teaching myself, reading a lot, learning a lot about equity, racial equity in particular, racial justice in particular, and feeling like I wanted to have a bigger impact and have conversations that you don't necessarily always get in sort of town halls and community workshops, and this work is really work in action with students. And, you know, I joined the board in 2019 with Liz as new members and with Monique as a continuing member, and it was all very new then, but I knew that it had a lot of possibility, and I was excited to be with so many experienced, committed people that I had a new level of learning to go through, and I was excited about that. My daughter was, I guess, a junior in high school, and it was nice to be in the same community from a slightly different perspective as she was and to, you know, take advantage of her wisdom and her perspective as a student to help me guide my own thinking about things. And so I'm really grateful for that. And then we had the pandemic, and that was a whole new, a whole new thing for all of us. And I was just so grateful to be among professionals, people who, you know, the teachers and the staff and the administrators here are just incredible, and I really saw that in action, and it was very inspiring, and it made me feel very proud to be part of this community and part of this board. So I just want to say, I just can't even, I can't even quantify how much I've learned from all of you and how much I am taking away with me, and if there's anything I can do in the future to help or support, I will do. And yeah, I'm not dying, I'm not going very far. I even told Liz she could borrow my car if she wanted to, she needed to get to the board meetings. So I just thank you again for everything. I hope to stay in conversation with all of you because we all have a lot more learning and dialogue to engage in with one another, so thanks for everything.
So I'll remember that you said that you would do whatever, because, you know, there's always the work and something and committees and... Gotcha. Thank you. All right. So now we are just going to review the board elections, and there are, we have to do the resolutions declaring results of the elections, and we'll start with the two-year resolution. Can we have a roll call, please? Oh, we need a motion. Okay, thank you. So could we have a motion?
Second.
So it's been moved in second. Liz made the motion, Pat Munsell, second.
You get to vote for yourself.
Yes, please. So what...
We're confirming the election.
Oh, we're, it's the resolution.
The resolution.
It's a resolution declaring the results. Yes, I mean, yes.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Munsell?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Rodelwood?
Yes.
Terrence?
Yes.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes, thank you. And so now we need a motion to declare the resolution for the four-year term.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rowlitz. Yes.
Terrence.
Yes.
Ante.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. Okay, so now we will go into an adjournment of the retiring board. I've called for a motion, wait, what do I do? Call for a motion with the roll call vote to retire the board into sit and die. So could I have a motion to retire the board to sit and die, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Ante.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Rowlitz. Yes.
Terrence.
Yes. Okay, so I'm gonna ask Dr. Davis to assume the role as president pro temp.
You bet. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna do the, the oath of office right now for the board members who were just newly elected. So if you'll join me at the podium, we will do that.
The duties of the office of member of the Board of Education.
The duties of the office of the Board of Education.
The Board of Education.
Of Evanston Township High School.
Of Evanston Township High School.
District 202.
District 202.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear that.
I further swear that.
I shall respect taxpayers' interests.
I shall respect taxpayers' interests.
By serving as a faithful protector.
By serving as a faithful protector.
Of the school district's assets.
Of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect.
I shall encourage and respect.
The free expression of opinion.
The free expression of opinion.
By my fellow board members.
By my fellow board members.
And others who seek a hearing.
And others who seek a hearing.
Before the board.
Before the board.
While respecting the privacy.
While respecting the privacy.
Of students and employees.
Of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member.
I shall recognize that a board member.
Has no legal authority as an individual.
Has no legal authority as an individual.
And the decisions can be made.
And the decisions can be made.
Only by a majority vote.
Only by a majority vote.
At a public board meeting.
At a public board meeting.
And I shall abide by majority decisions.
And I shall abide by majority decisions.
Of the board.
Of the board.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
While retaining the right to seek changes.
In such decisions.
In such decisions.
Through ethical.
Through ethical.
And constructive channels.
And constructive channels.
Congratulations.
Amen.
Amen.
Welcome.
Just go ahead and go on, boy.
Behind the screen.
And here's your official.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
I'm so glad.
Great job, Nicole. Seriously. It's much easier.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order and ask for a roll call vote.
Ante.
Yes.
Livingston.
What, what is this vote on?
New board.
New board, back to order.
They're new board, we're back.
Back to order.
Yes.
Monsell.
Here.
Parsons.
Yes.
Ecar.
Here.
Rowlitz.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes.
All right, now I'd like to do the election of officers. So I will take nominations for the office of president, vice president, and secretary. Nominations need not be seconded. Each nomination will be voted in the order of their nomination, and once a candidate receives a majority of votes of the board, four votes, the election process is over. I would like to call for nominations for the office of president of the Board of Education for a one-year term.
I would like to nominate Pat Savage Williams as president of the school board.
Are there any other nominations? I'm gonna close the nominations and call for a vote.
Ante.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Ecar.
Yes.
Rowlitz.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes.
Now I'm gonna have the new president assume the chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Now I will take nominations for vice president of the Board of Education.
So I would like to nominate Monique Parsons as vice president of the board because nobody could fill those shoes. So that's why you had to run this time. But in all seriousness, we couldn't ask for better leadership from Pat and Monique, and why, why stop a great thing? So thank you for all that you do, Monique, for the board and the community, and you know I adore you, so thank you. So the end, she's, she wins.
Well, there's just another couple of steps.
It's Chicago, whatever.
It's Chicago. Are there other nominations for vice president? Hearing none. The nominations are closed. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ante.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Ecar.
Yes.
Rowlitz.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Congratulations, Monique.
Thank you. That's great.
All right, so now I would like to take nominations for the secretary of the board.
I'll nominate Pete Davis.
All right. Pete Davis has been nominated as secretary. Is there, are there other nominations? Hearing none. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ante.
Well, I'm scared. Yes.
The Holy Mira.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Ecar.
Yes.
Rowlitz.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So could I have a motion to appoint Kendra Williams as schools treasurer of the Board of Education for a one-year term with a compensation of $1,000?
So moved. Second.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Ante.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Ecar.
Yes.
Rowlitz.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So could I have a motion to appoint Kendra Williams as schools treasurer of the Board of Education for a one-year term with a compensation of $1,000?
So moved. Second.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Ante.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Ecar. Yes.
Rowlitz.
Yes.
Savage Williams.
Yes. The next one is resolution designating signatory.
So moved. Second.
Can I do them all together?
Oh, good.
Wonderful. Okay, so let's do all of these. So there's that one, then there's a resolution regarding check signatures, resolution establishing regular meeting dates and place, resolution ratifying approved depositories, and resolution establishing, I'm sorry, resolution establishing dates to review closed session minutes. So it's resolution one through six on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ante.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Ecar. Yes.
Rowlitz.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, the next item before cake is review of student election and oath of office for student board representative. So I have here recognition of retiring student, student board member. However, our student board member is not retiring. You won by a landslide. So I will say that it's been really great having you as our student board rep. And, you know, usually we, we just have a rep that's here for one year, but I'm really excited to see what will happen year two. You know the routine now. Sometimes it takes a few board meetings to kind of get to know what to do, when to speak, and just the flow of things, but you got it, you know it. So thank you for agreeing to serve a second year. I think I speak for the board when I say that. And thank you for bringing what we do to the student body. We, we're always listening to your report because you really provide that information to us, you provide that, that liaison, that, that communication to us. You are, in, in a sense, you're our link to the students, so thank you for, for doing that. All right, so Dr. Davis, well, first we have to vote on the resolution, right? Resolution declaring results of the student election. So can I have a motion to accept the resolution, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Livingston.
Yes.
Monsell.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Ecar.
Yes.
Rowlitz.
Yes.
Ante.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the oath. Come on up, Nicole, we're gonna do it again.
It's fun.
I promise it's a little less than a month. I say your name.
I, Nicole.
Yeah.
A student member of the Board of Education.
A student member of the Board of Education.
Of Evanston Township High School.
Of Evanston Township High School.
District 202.
District 202.
County of Cook, Illinois.
County of Cook, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I have been elected.
To which I have been elected.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, so I invite you all for cake. We're gonna take about a 10 or 15-minute break, take the cake, and then we'll come back and finish our meeting. and then we'll come back and finish our meeting. And there's plenty of cake left, so I'm sure if anybody wants to take cake home or even eat during the meeting, feel free. Okay, so we are at items for information. This is the serious part of our meeting. So the first item is a report on school-based health center. And Dr. Campbell?
Yes, we're gonna have Amy Crowe and Joyceia to come. Who work at our school-based health center and run the school-based health center to share their annual reports.
Yeah, we have a lot more good news, so.
Good.
Yeah. I think we saw many of you last year, and now there's some new faces, so thanks for having us back. All right.
So we are a school-based health center. I came here seven years ago, and I would go around saying, yeah, we're a health center. We're a clinic. We're a clinic, because that's a term that folks could identify with. And I think in recent years, I've started using the term "school-based health center" much more in hopes of educating folks on what school-based health centers are. I'm pretty sure this board is very familiar with the term. But I've also got the definition up here as stated by the National School-Based Health Alliance. Many of you know that we are a partnership between ETHS North Shore and the city of Evanston. And we've been that partnership since 1997. We have been providing primary care services for all ETHS students since then, really with one of our main goals to keep students in school. And so we work closely with the nurse's office. We have started working closely with safety, and we have been working with teachers for well over a decade in educating our students on health. And we are happy to continue that and kind of level up a little after 28 years.
I think we gave you our mission last year. I'm Amy Crowe. I'm a pediatric hospitalist at Evanston Hospital, who also is the medical director of our amazing school-based health center. So our mission that we wrote was we welcome and provide care for all ETHS students, empowering them to take agency of their own healthcare practices and optimize their lifelong physical and mental health.
As many of you well know, there has been a pretty sharp increase in the needs of mental health services for this age group. And so up here are some of our actions in direct response to that. We have one social worker that works at the school-based health center, and we increased her hours to 32 hours a week. We have also started offering art therapy group sessions through Open Studio Project, which I know was also doing general art studio for students at the school, but ours was a little bit more focused in providing art therapy. We have also brought back acupuncture. Prior to the pandemic, we were offering acupuncture services through the Integrative Medicine Department at North Shore, and we have brought that back this year. This year, we have also helped onboard North Shore's psychiatric program. It is called Bridges. That's the name of the program. And they are a counseling and psychiatric medication management program to see students on site here. And
I think we talked to you about that last year, that that was our dream. And it actually came into fruition this year, and thanks to North Shore and thanks to ETHS for finding the space. We now have a way for kids to get access to psychiatric care in a way they never had before. So it's great.
Yeah, and I also want to give a shout out to Julie Portnoy, who is a social worker that has been working here for over 20 years, who has been with Bridges this whole time, and now her whole team is here.
In terms of our focus on reproductive health, we continue to provide like free and confidential access to all forms of contraception. We still partner with Erie Family Health for long-acting contraception, or LARCs. And we still do have a role in providing health education in the ninth grade. Sex ed, it used to be called. And we work with Lori Children's on that. And we've, that's come a long way in terms of the quality and progressiveness of that education. And then we still have a SDI testing and prevention as one of our main goals, particularly with the rise in rates nationally and locally among teens in those diseases. So we have a campaign every year for testing and prevention, but we provide that all year, all year round. I think, you know, there's like an attack, currently there's an attack on sex education, access to reproductive health, gender-affirming care in this country and many places. And we feel, you know, grateful to continue to do what we're doing. And we've been doing it for 25 years, and we'll continue to do so.
Also, for well over a decade, we've been doing what we've called Well Kits, which is a wellness program. It's evolved over the years from a weight management program to simply just a healthy lifestyle program for any patient that wants to have some guidance or some support in achieving their goals related to nutrition, related to fitness. And we find that focusing on improving your sleep, coping with stress, and managing your sugar intake really affect many aspects of one's health, from physical to mental. And that is now available to anybody that is a health center patient. We continue to collaborate and take that information, you know, from what we do with Well Kits, from the exam room into the classroom. With the PE department for our 10th graders, we do the Sugar Show, which has been done in some of the elementary schools. But we go, we dive a little deeper into the topics around it for 10th graders. Also, along the wellness piece, we were able to give flu vaccines to nearly 300 of ETHS staff. We did that last flu season. And we do also offer this service for our student athletes, where if they get injured while playing a sport, and even if they're off-season, they can come to the sports medicine clinic on-site at the health center. One of our main priorities is transition to care. And what that means is talking to our graduating seniors about ensuring they know how to get their health care after they graduate. So questions like, do you know what your health insurance is? Do you know if you have health insurance? Do you carry your card with you? Do you know who you see regularly? Do you have a primary care physician? Do you know the difference between urgent care and the ED? And we take care particularly with students who might need mental health services after they graduate, or reproductive health services if they're moving out of state. We do pay a lot of, you know, personalized attention to our students in ensuring that they are able to get health care and know how to navigate health care once they leave ETHS. We are, we continue to search for opportunities. It's pretty insane, all the potential opportunities for, essentially what this is, is health literacy. Ensuring that students gain that. So we'd love to learn more about school links and these like, it goes hand in hand with financial literacy and how that is approached in various classes. And we'd love to be able to integrate and incorporate principles of health literacy into those as well. Many of you might be familiar with the ASPIRE program that started last year. We really try, we come across a lot of patients that say, you know, I want to go into health care. And we really try and funnel them into ASPIRE. So that is what we like to do for, in terms of like our post-secondary planning. Many of you might not have heard of Health Center ambassadors. They're our youth advisory board. And they've been in existence for at least seven years, but they've really not picked up steam until last year, when we were able to partner with Loyola University Chicago's Parkinson's School of Public Health. They've been helping us by giving us public health interns. And really, these are college students that are trying to get their masters in public health. And they come and work with our youth advisory board for a semester. And they have really kind of breathed new life into our youth advisory board. And so this year, they've done a lot more in providing peer education on blood donation, STI prevention, mental health awareness. This is something that we hope to continue to impact our students with.
Just to orient you to these numbers over the years. So at this point, we are seeing, we are on track to see more unique patients than ever before for 2022 to 23. And the encounters are sort of similar to last year in terms, well, we're on track to be similar to last year, but we're reaching more individual patients than ever before, which is nice. And we're, we're at or above, oh, sorry, at or above the pre-pandemic levels.
I would attribute that to, attribute that to just the increased need for health services. And my hope is that more people are just aware and informed of what the school-based health center is.
And you can see on the next slide, the breakdown of the visits. So this is just part of this year. But we see, we see physicals, six visits, reproductive health visits, mental health, well kits, and acupuncture. So the whole gamut. Next slide. So we're, we're at the forefront of, sort of the front line of prevention education for for the public health crises that we face right now. The one we're particularly focused on this month is fentanyl overdose prevention. So, so, you know, fentanyl is now the leading cause of death from 18 to 45. So this is the time right now to do that education in high school. We just brought a really amazing program to all juniors and seniors. So we learned about everything there is to know that we need to know about fentanyl and how to stay safe, because accidental overdose is, you know, on the rise. So for example, 100,000 people died last year. So, and we, we're also very focused on gun safety and violence prevention. We can start where, where in our lane, which is asking the questions and learning about confidentially what, what, what guns are in the home and are they safe? You know, we can teach about gun safety and how to, how to keep, you know, guns and ammunition separate and locked, and we can provide gun locks if necessary. So we can start within the, the public health domain that we work in, and then we can get involved in the community in further, in further avenues. And then we mentioned before about reproductive health services and gender-affirming care and our role in those. So, next slide. This is just a nice thing we wanted to, one of the things we wanted to leave you on is a letter we got from a parent recently, just talking about her, her child. "Starting this Friday," she's, she was saying, "our child, my child will begin taking a number of AP exams. He's looking at colleges and he's excited about his future. It's entirely possible that without ETHS's amazing health services, we would not have gotten to this point. Honestly, without the team at ETHS combining social and medical services, I don't know if my son would be alive." Next slide. So I leave you with a photo. This is our phenomenal social work therapist, Yolanda Kim. And what I want you to know about her is that she's in her office where she does therapy, but it also happens to be our kitchen. So it's a tiny little closet-shaped space, and she's put in mood lighting and beautiful tapestries. But this is just what, what, what we mostly want to say about this is that we have far outgrown our space, like many people at ETHS and many departments. But we don't have enough room for all that we do and all the people that we serve. And so we want you to just know, know that and know that this may be, may be something that comes up in the future. So there, that's, you didn't want to say anything else about that?
Yeah, I mean, I know, I know the health sciences wing is, is well underway, and it'd be beautiful to have like a North Shore wing where we are located not on the complete opposite end of the building from Bridges. What's really helpful is that we are so proximal to the nurses' office. We do work quite closely with them.
But we can't have all of our mental health services housed in our, in our current place that just has three exam rooms, you know? So now that mental health has grown so much and we've expanded, and now we have psychiatry, and we just don't have any, sorry, we just don't have any space for it. So maybe there's a vision we can all come up with in the future for, for a bigger center that, that crosses over between all these services.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, we'd love questions. Comments, questions.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I, I just, this is, this is powerful. And I, and I hear, I hear your concern regarding space. I think that you are doing a phenomenal job. I, I'm extremely impressed by our school-based health center, and thank you for that definition. I wrote it down. I'm going to try to get that again. I think I might have missed some of the words, but that whole achieving health equity among children and adolescents, it's important. Because we know, especially during the pandemic, that that really was lifted up. It was so clear, it was so obvious. Those, those disparities just really made a difference in life and death for so many people. So thank you for that. I did want to ask if you could explain a little bit the difference between encounters and patients? I think I knew.
Right.
But can you just kind of help me understand that?
So patients are those who are registered to use the clinic who actually used it.
Okay.
And then encounters are the number of times we've seen them, but they may have come for many. Each person may have come for several encounters, which is why that number is higher.
I see.
Yeah, the encounters are, are visits, like the number of visits.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Other questions, board? Anybody? Leah?
What, what is the, how are you doing on the number of students registered for the Health Center? And I think related to that, maybe a sense of, I mean, you offer and do so much, but how well that, that message is getting out to students and families?
Right. I'd say a little less than half of the student population is registered, and about half that number walks through our doors at any given point. We have really tried to be visible in as many avenues as possible to inform students and families. We do like to start with the parents. We try to be visible at the various parent info nights, like incoming freshmen, information night, course selection night, all of those events. We also try and get in as many classrooms or fairs or summits to inform students of our services. What we've not been up on are like creating cute TikToks and things of that nature to have like a social media presence, but we'd love to get there.
Other comments, Pat?
That sounds like a job for the youth advisory.
Yes.
So mine wasn't so much a question, just as a thank you, because we've talked a lot about through the pandemic and since, the, the heightened need for wellness among our students and the challenges that they've been facing and continue to face. And so it's just great that you're here and that you're helping, certainly on any level, but particularly with the mental health. I'm, I'm really glad to hear that you've expanded, and sadly, she's in the kitchen. But, you know, it's really, those things are just so important. And so the more, the more options our students have, the better, because we certainly are seeing that they, they need those options. So I'm really thankful to you. So that's really my, my point was just to say thank you.
No, it's so helpful to have that backed by the school as well. We, we see the themes of healing all over the place, and it's, we see it as one of the school board goals, and we very much appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Well, thank you. Thank you again.
I was going to say, without our health, we can't learn.
Yes.
So anything we can do to keep, keep kids in school and keep them learning.
Yes. I love the emphasis on, as students leave, making sure that they understand how they can access healthcare. I think that's amazing. That's great.
It's huge.
Huge, yeah, it is. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
Yes, thank you. All right, our next item is the sustainability update.
We're going to invite John Crawford and Clarence Gregory, Kelsey, you're coming up too for sustainability. And Kim, are you also? Nope, okay, just these three.
All right, thank you for having us. My name's John Crawford, Director of Operations and Sustainability.
Clarence Gregory, 18 days counting down. John Crawford's replacing me. So you guys are in great hands with John Crawford in this building.
Yep.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Barini. I'm the new Assistant Director of Nutrition Services.
So we're excited here to talk about sustainability here at ETHS. The first thing is, what is sustainability? I think if we pulled, took a poll in the room here, no one would have the right answer or the same answer. But here at ETHS, we look at it as reducing, reuse, renewable, and recycle. You could also add some more R's so that rethink, repurpose, reusable, but that's, that's how we look at sustainability. How we reduce our energy usages through our SEM program, Strategic Energy Management. We started this in 2019, and I think we actually reported on it right before COVID, February 2020 were our initial results. And happy to say it, we're, we're going strong in it still. We're now entering year five. And the focus is on low-to-no-cost initiatives that equate to real energy savings. We work with coaches from ComEd, Nycor, that help navigate some rebates and incentives on those savings as well. Here's how we show some of our SEM electrical savings. Year one is 2019. We reduced our electricity by over 330,000 kilowatt-hours, which was a 3.6% reduction off our 2018 baseline usage. 2020, we increased that to one, over 1.2 million kilowatt-hours, which was a 13.4%. And 2021, over 1.8 million, which is a 20% reduction. They, we changed the way we're looking at our baseline and model, so that's why we don't have 2022 numbers yet. They're combining those with our current 2023. So we will see those next year at this time. On the natural gas side of things, you'd see our 2018 baseline usage was over a million thermes. 2019, we reduced 100,000 thermes, 222,000 in 2020, and 348,000 in 2021, which is a 31.3% reduction off our baseline. Now, I want to emphasize, this is on low-to-no-cost initiatives. Temperature setbacks, space temperature, you know, setting a standard space temperature in the summer, and then setting a different one in the winter. Greenhouse gas emissions. 2018 baseline, we were over 10,000 tons of CO2. You could see 2019, we reduced that by 7.9%. 2020, 20.8%, and 2021, we are a 31% reduction on our greenhouse gas emissions, which is phenomenal. For those that are more like the financial side of things, here's our electricity savings, our natural gas savings, along with the incentives that we earned by, by reducing. So you could see in 2019, almost $100,000 in savings. 2020, almost 250, and 2021, almost 360, over $360,000 in savings.
Thank you. So tonight, I'm just going to be providing an overview of some of the efforts made by our Nutrition Services Department in promoting sustainability, starting with our student cafeterias. Thanks to the collective effort of the ETHS Waste Reduction Committee and dedicated student volunteers, we were able to implement a composting station in East Cafeteria. And I'll also mention, just to go along with the composting, that our department doesn't use any Styrofoam, and most of our disposable items, including napkins, are compostable. So a lot of the waste that we are producing is able to be composted and turned into something else. We've transitioned in district-wide to reusable trays, and this also reduces our single-use paper plates. And as many of you know, throughout the pandemic, everything was prepackaged, individually wrapped nationwide for most K-12 food service departments. I think we took a different approach coming out of the pandemic, and most of our food here is served bulk wherever possible. So our condiments are in reusable bulk containers that have pumps on them. We also have all of our fresh fruit and vegetables in large hotel pans, and that way students can serve themselves. Our utensils are all in a bulk, like, machines, you can just take what you need. They're not in prepackaged containers that also contain napkins or sporks or knives or utensils that students are not using. This next slide is really interesting, and this is something that gets me very excited. The Illinois State Board of Education received 241 proposals from school food authorities all over the state totaling over $10 million in budget requests for different projects. And we were fortunate enough to be awarded one of the 66 proposals that was selected. So we are awarded $21,000 to install bulk milk dispensers in all four cafeterias, and then also purchase reusable cups and dishwashing racks, so that we're able to not replace milk cartons with plastic cups that get disposed of. Along with that in the grant, we asked for four food processors to take whole produce and then chop it down into, you know, sliced carrots or shredded or what have you. So then we're not purchasing pre-cut produce that comes in plastic packaging. And this also allows us to purchase more local products that come whole and that are not able to be processed ahead of time. So it's also helping reduce some of our carbon emissions, because food's not traveling nearly as far to come to our school district. Talking about the bulk milk a little more, I know some people find that to be an interesting thing to implement. But this is a really common thing in most college campuses, and a lot of the ETHS students are planning to go to universities or some other form of education afterwards. And if there is a shared dining hall, they likely have bulk milk. You don't see the little cartons in a lot of college campuses.
True.
And I will add that we are not able to compost the milk cartons. So those are landfill. So we get to reduce all of that, and it feels a little more sophisticated drinking out of an actual glass. There's a few statistics from the Midwest Dairy Association, and it shows that we can reduce packaging waste by up to 91% by volume. So that's pretty impressive. And students claim that the milk tastes better because it's colder, and actually increases consumption by 50%. So milk is good for our students, and they're likely to drink more of it. We'll see if that's the case here, but we're excited to test this out in the next school year. Also, our milk, current milk coolers are like 22 years old, so they're in need of being replaced. In our staff dining room, just six weeks ago, we implemented a new forever-wear trashless takeaway program. Some of the staff may have tried this. It essentially works like checking out a book at the library. Staff put down a $5 one-time refundable deposit. It's linked to their staff ID, and then they check out takeaway containers from the terrace, use them, they can take them home, take them to their office, and then they scan them back into us, and that same $5 gets recycled every single day. And the only reason we collect the deposit is so if people want to refund at the end of the school year, we're easily able to contact them, and we know which containers are checked out to specific people. The alternative would be to use the glassware that's already in the terrace, and that's always available to anyone that decides to dine in with us. We're trying to use more of that in our catering program as well, especially for smaller events, since we have a wide variety of different plates, cups, and all that kind of stuff to use without having to do paper product. One fun fact about our department, in the past 10 years, we have not increased our budget for paper products, which is, I think is a testament considering all the inflation that we've experienced, especially for products like paper, plates, napkins, that sort of thing. In our central kitchen, we've been composting for the past six years, 40 totes annually, which equates to 13,000 pounds or 5,000 gallons. And we hope to continue to increase that, especially when we look ahead to adding the compostations in all four cafeterias. We serve meals to District 65. We prepare them, we order the food, and then we send it off to District 65. And I think we do a really great job of being sustainable in that practice as well, since the food is served in insulated containers in large hotel pans that are then served to the students on the line when it gets to the school, instead of individual, like hinged takeout containers. And that's roughly 26,000 meals per year that we're serving. And that's roughly 26,000 meals per year that we're serving in a sustainable way. Looking ahead, I just mentioned, but we are hoping to compost district-wide. We will need a few more volunteers in order to staff them at the different cafeterias. And then we're also hoping to eliminate plastic water bottles. We've already started selling boxed water in the cafeterias and in the staff dining hall. And then with additional grant funding in the future, we're hopeful that we can offer reusable flatware to students as well. I'm going to hand it back over to John. Thank you.
Okay, so the, the most asked question, solar panels at ETHS, where are they? We did some solar feasibility and roof assessments earlier in the year. We are, we have 159 different roof elevations here at ETHS. Yeah, currently, nine of those roofs are currently acceptable for a solar array. So not a very good percentage there, but, and that's, that's not just due to existing conditions, but most of our roofs have the mechanical spaces on the roof. So that creates some shading issues where it's not really acceptable for a solar array to produce a meaningful kilowatt. So the, the nine roofs that we do have acceptable, it would be a, a solar array of about 539,000, which would be a 7.5% annual offset. Because of the roof assessment, we knew which was the best roof that needs to be done that would be good for solar, and that 10th roof is the roof over G220, G230, it's a flat roof. And that roof alone would be about a 3.5% offset. So add that to that, to the original nine roofs, and you're at, you know, almost 800,000 kilowatt hours. We did also have them look at a carport array. I don't know if you've seen, like, Michigan State, Rutgers, they have some beautiful carport arrays, which are a lot more expensive, but just the middle sections of our parking lots would produce 1.28, 1,282,000 kilowatt hours, which would be a 19% offset. Which is pretty good. So what's happening right now? 100% of the electricity we purchase is guaranteed renewable. We made that investment earlier this year. We were at 30%, and we increased it to 100%. It, it is costing the district more money, but the more communities, the more school districts that demand it, the more the energy provider has to invest in it as well. Majority of ours comes from a Texas wind farm, which is an interesting fact. We also applied for a $50,000 matching energy efficiency grant through the State Board. We, we, we got it, so it's $100,000 where we're installing LED lights this summer, which would be about 520. We have over 6,000 LED lights in the building, 2,000 more, and we will be complete. So this is about 25% more of what we have left to do. We completed a ComEd Public School Carbon-Free Assessment, which was an in-depth look at our operations, our facilities, our mechanical systems. And we get, actually received this report next week. It'll be an in-depth report that will provide a clear path to how we could become carbon-free. They'll also provide us with grant opportunities, rebate opportunities, and then, once it opens, the State of Illinois Construction Grant, this allows us to apply for that. We recently partnered with Echo Ship, which is a, a company from Chicago that collects gently-used Amazon mailers, padded mailers, bubble wrap, packing paper. They redistribute it to local businesses. We have that located in the main office, and we filled the bag already the first week. Landscaping at ETHS is now one... Marcus is laughing. 100% electric, battery, or robotic? Some of the robots work better than others right now, but we're working on that. Technicians come out every day and monitor the cut. They know if something happened, if kids shut them off, open them up, et cetera. They've, they've been named, they have googly eyes on them, there's, I'm sure there's more to come on that. Once they all are working, and, and they will come out, they were seeking an American Green Zone Alliance certification. As far as I know, there's only one school in the, in the United States that is certified Green Zone, so hopefully we are the second. And then, this is probably the one, the day I got named as Sustainability Coordinator, I got an email from my friends at E-Town Sunrise, and they said, hey, Mr. Crawford, we're E-Town Sunrise. Congratulations, when can you meet? And I've been meeting with them every month since. I, I think I've given them a level of transparency and open, openness that they really appreciate. They're leading a group of students, community members, staff, administration, and, and a board member, thank you, Liz. And I helped facilitate this group, but, but the kids are leading the, and they hope to, over the next few months, continue meeting and, and develop a sustainability policy that hopefully we could pass here at the school board. Once we do pass that policy, the hard work will be in, in developing a plan to, to meet that policy, but... And before I open it up to questions, I just, I have one more thing about sustainability, and it has nothing to do with the building, it's more of the sustainability of this guy right here. Almost 40 years at the district.
We, we were going to say that, I thank you for that, John.
Yeah.
We want to congratulate Clarence Gregory for 39 years of service.
Wow.
At Evanson. There is not a mechanical piece of this building, and it's 1.3 million square feet of space and 64 acres, that Clarence doesn't know about. So, I mean, what are we going to do without you, Mr. Gregory?
Yeah.
Deacon Gregory.
Thank you, but at the same time, John Crawford is being humble. All these LED fixtures that you see in this room and throughout the building, all the work was done in-house. We didn't contract Electric Joe to come do the work. And most people understand that electrical, electrician can cost you $150 per man, per hour. So look at the man-hours that the district is putting, over 600 lamps or far fixtures?
Oh, 6,000.
6,000 lamps.
Yeah.
Other than the parking lot lamps, you know, you need to lift for that.
Right.
So Operations Department has been doing a fantastic job of
Yes.
taking care of the equipment, installing the equipment the correct way in the building.
And you all are a beautiful story, because what you all also don't know is that John was an apprentice of Clarence back in 1997?
Correct.
Was it 1997?
Yeah.
So John took the job here as an apprentice and has been training under Mr. Gregory for the last 26 years, whatever that is. And so, and now he sits as our new Director of Operations and Sustainability, so...
Good man, good man.
I know Clarence is, is retiring, but he, he lives right down the street, I know where he lives, and I know what kind of donuts he likes, so we'll get him back every year, don't worry.
Because you won't get the calls in the middle of the night when something's going wrong here, so...
Yeah, not to mention, every department's safety member has Clarence's number on speed dial.
Well, thank you. Any questions for John?
Well, I just want to say thank you to, to all of you, really. The report was, was great. I really enjoyed the report on Nutrition Services and all the creative... I'm not sure that I understand all of them, that deposit, you know, I just, I kind of have to see it, but it just sounds brilliant, actually. You're really thinking through how to, how to save and, and, and teaching, teaching students, really, that this is what we do. So, so thank you for taking the time to, to do that. And John, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to ETHS, and, you know, hopefully, we'll continue all of this. I know that Liz is now working with Sunrise, E-Town Sunrise, and, and you are as well, so... Liz and I are going to talk, I'm interested in, in the request. So we'll just have to kind of see what more we can do as a board. So thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, I would, oops, sorry, I'm sorry, my corner. One is, I, thank you, I, but I want to know how the electricity gets here from Texas, but we don't have to talk about it. Way beyond my thoughts. And I love that our kids are starting, they probably have, but even more heightened what they did in elementary and middle. They'll see more of that as we're doing this work. But one of my questions is, how much does it cost roughly to keep the school going per day? Just electricity, like, if we were to estimate?
On a daily basis?
Yeah.
That, that's a good question, in the, in the summer or the winter?
Right. Okay, so how about during the summer? Because I have a plan. Not summer, summer, but like, right now, like, a day like today.
Like a day like today, I mean, I, I would have to do the math to figure out exactly what a daily...
Probably a lot, I go...
Well, it depends, yeah, if like the whole building's being used, or if we're isolating. Like, one of the things we try doing in summer school now is, is isolating where we are hosting summer school. So the whole building doesn't have to run. You know, we have almost 60 different fan units in the building, and most of them are constant volume, so that means they're either on or they're off. And like, the board meeting in North 112, for example, it's the only thing going on right now in this wing, and the fan's running, but it's, it's heating or cooling all three floors.
Right.
So, you know, the, our systems are old, and because of that, we really try to isolate where we are hosting after-hour and summer events.
I'm, I'm, shouldn't, you guys, they're probably going to be like this after I'm done. My thought was just that, because I'm guessing it's, could be, you know, $10,000, I mean, it's a lot of money more, right? So I was just thinking if there were a day where we dedicated ourselves to not being, using whatever pieces as a collective contribution to cutting back the costs, and even a day could make such a huge difference, or if we did it twice a year and participated in that way, but as a, a new community. And maybe it would mean that different areas around the city would have to hold our kids or do different things, but I just was, I wanted to put a price tag on the idea, so that's why I asked that question, but...
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll figure the math out for you.
Okay.
Get back to you on that.
But you could also talk about our summer savings, and not just how we run summer school, but Fridays, which is what we, what we do. We do that every Friday in the summer.
Yeah, so, so Fridays, Fridays, there's no staff here, there's no summer school, and, and so, how we, you know, obviously, it might be 90 degrees on that Friday, so it's not like we can't run cooling for our, the staff that is here, you know, Operations is here. But what we do have is an ice storage machine, so it builds ice overnight and stores it, and then when we need it for cooling, when, we usually use it when electricity is at its highest peak. We then melt the ice and use that chilled water as our cooling. So that's one of the systems that I, I gave E-Town Sunrise a tour on, and they were amazed at it. Now, I mean, that is, that system is now, what, 20, almost 25 years old? So, I mean, a lot of our systems are at or nearing their life expectancy, so... It's a, it's a great time for this carbon-free assessment to see how we could address these issues and combine them with replacing equipment as they're, at their life expectancy, and not just because we want to replace it, so, yeah.
Then in the summertime, ComEd notifies Mr. Crawford here on the high-temperature days. Tell him what you do, John, let him know what you do.
We do run our, we do run our, our generators, and hopefully we don't start a fire like last year, but we do, we, we also have our own generators across the street that can provide electricity for this building. So if we run the generators on the five highest-peak days of the year, we don't pay any transmission or capacity costs on our electric bill, which, which comes out to around $300,000 a year, additional savings.
Yes, what most people don't know is that the school has its own power plant.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I, I did have one, a question.
Okay.
You didn't specifically talk about sort of the trees and the plantings around the school, and mostly because I don't know anything about this electricity stuff. I'm going to ask you about what I do know about, which is a little bit about trees. And I love that we're, I think through partnerships, planting some additional trees on our property, which I think is just always a great thing. And I know we're trying to do native and pollinator-friendly stuff. I'm wondering if part of that work is taking stock of what's already growing on our property? Because I'm, I, I think there are some trees, some growth on our property, including probably in excess of just plain old grass that needs to be maintained, that we could reevaluate. And the one thing that comes to mind, I could be totally wrong about this, but we did that beautiful new hardscaping mostly, but some landscaping at our front entrance a number of years ago. I don't know if those are Bradford pears out front, but those are like the worst tree ever. It's highly invasive, and if those in fact are Bradford pears, we ought to get, get them out and plant something else. So I'm just going to toss that out there, because I never thought I'd be bringing this up at a board meeting. But every time I walk by there, I'm like, God, those should not be Bradford pears, because they're just, they're horribly invasive, they're non-native, and they're, they're not the right plant, if in fact that's what they are.
And we, it's called a Sabre Tree now, it used to be Nels Johnson.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
These guys are professional tree experts.
I know, but a lot of these places, at one point, were trying to unload some of this stuff.
Well, but they are...
Okay.
Between them...
So what are they?
Between, I couldn't tell you.
Oh, okay.
But between them and the city of Evanson, that's, also, they go around and check the trees on the campus. They put tags on them, Sabre Tree puts tags on them. And then they come in and decide which trees are really bad. A few trees here on campus, the tree company actually came out and put bars across the top because the trees were splitting.
Those are Bradford pears, they, they split.
On Lakesford, we got rid of it, now, we got rid of it last week, but we work hand-in-hand, and then we stay within budget, because everything's a cost, so...
No, I get it. I'd be curious if somebody could let me know what those are.
We'll let you know.
I don't know if those are Bradford pears, but I did walk the campus with Leslie Schad.
Yeah.
And she just, they just planted 21 trees on campus
Yeah, I know that, yeah.
the other day.
Yeah.
I don't remember her saying those are Bradford pears, because she did point out some other things that she wanted me to get rid of.
They may not be, they may not be. And I'm, I'm glad that you're having, you know, you're doing sort of a regular survey, because it's more than just adding the new stuff. You know, it's also sort of taking into account things that are here that we don't really want to be here.
Right, yeah.
You know? And, and that includes probably the large grassy expanses, which, you know, there's some arguments about trying to minimize that and the upkeep that's necessary, you know, including things like water and so forth.
Yeah.
I will get a list from Nels Johnson, no, Sabre Tree.
Yeah, they're Sabre Tree, and actually, I use them too, they, they look at trees in, in my own yard. Nels Johnson now Sabre Tree.
No problem, we'll give it to Mr. Campbell before May 31st.
All right, other questions, board? Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, great, great. All right. So we are at the District Goals Discussion.
No, 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 we have a...
Farm, oh, Farm School Report, yes, sorry. One more.
We're going to have Kim and Nestor, our Director of Nutrition Services, and Matt, you're going to introduce...
Ryan.
Ryan, I'm sorry, going to introduce, and we're going to talk about the Farm to School, which I think is also an incredible program that kind of relates to what we've been talking about tonight, so go ahead. Kim and Ryan?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, thanks for having us. I'm really excited to be here, because we don't get a lot of opportunity to talk about this very unique program. Oh, I forgot I have the clicker. Those are carrots from the garden, those are not just a picture I found.
Nice.
Yeah. Okay, so our department is made up of a lot of pieces, and when I kind of think about it, our department, I think about it as all these balls in the air, so I thought this was kind of a cool visualization. So I thought this was kind of a cool visualization of, obviously, the biggest portion of our department is feeding kids. But there's a lot of things underneath that. There's breakfast, there's lunch, there's after-school meals that are free, just so everybody knows, snacks and dinner. Students have that capability. We serve the city of Evanston summer camps. And obviously, we talked a little bit about our sustainability and composting prior. And we have our staff dining room, vending, District sixty-five lunches. So there's a lot of things, and they kind of overlap sometimes, and sometimes they're completely separate from each other. So, but I was here to talk about the Farm to School program, so that's what I'm going to do. And I have like, I'm excited about it, it's our passion, for sure. Okay, so here's our, I think it's funny, because it goes from the nineteen twenties to two thousand nine. But I don't know much about prior to two thousand nine, so I can only put down here kind of what we've done thus far. So, in two thousand nine, we started the Edible Acre One. That's when the horticulture class started. And in two thousand twelve, that's when we kind of took it over. And, and Matt came on board full-time. And we were able to set up a crop plan and begin to establish harvest and, you know, consumption of, of the harvest that we have. And water was put in, and a lot of different things went on then. Two thousand fourteen is when we took the management over of the greenhouse. And some of you might have been at the ten-year anniversary party that we had. That was great to showcase that. Two thousand fifteen, we started the orchard. Two thousand sixteen, we had a grant to, what was that grant for exactly? That was to get the urban agriculture class?
For the greenhouse?
No, I'm sorry, I can't remember what that grant was actually for, I apologize. But that's when we also started our CSA. And for those of you that don't know what a CSA program is, that's Community Sustainable.
Supported.
Supported, I always mix those two up, agriculture. And we'll get into that a little bit more in a second. But, two thousand eighteen, we had our first harvest of the orch, on the orchard. And we became certified naturally grown. So we're organic practices, and you can go into a little bit more about that.
Yeah, it's a bit of a subset, so we have USDA, USDA organic certification. Certified, certified natural is kind of a step below that, it's more peer-reviewed, so not quite the same credentials as USDA organic. But it kind of puts you in that same kind of wheelhouse a little bit. It just shows that we have best practices around how we grow our food. Is it organic, is it sustainable, is it ethical?
Two thousand nineteen, we established the Edible Acre Two, which is right by the field, the football field, and started our seedling sale. And also, I think we were talking about how two thousand nineteen must have been a crazy year, because there was many things that we did. When I put this together, it was interesting, we must have really been rocking and rolling. But the, we also put new shrubs and plants in at Edible Acre One and Edible Acre Two. The ETHS Foundation gave us a grant to do the renovation of the greenhouse. And that's when we had our ten-year event. And then, two thousand twenty-one, we, we had the Boy Scouts, actually, we'll go in a little bit, that planted grapevines at Edible Acre Two on our pergola, so those fun stuff. Okay. Here's some garden info and stats. So those are our four lo, locations. And the square footage of each location, the size, the bed, number of beds, but the size of the beds are different sizes in the Edible Acre Two versus One. There's about fifty trees, a blend of apples and Asian pears at the orchard, and then the greenhouse.
So it's really good to meet all of you. I actually, surprisingly enough, have been working here since two thousand twelve. So, time flies when you're growing vegetables. So, I'm just going to kind of go through some of the ways we partner with the students, because obviously, that's a big part of what we, what we do and how we want to make an impact here. Surprised, this is a little side note, so I've been an urban farmer now for over a decade. And the interest from the student body on all levels, from college to high school, all across the whole country, is really kind of soaring. It's very ironic, there's kind of like a back-to-the-land movement from all shapes and sizes of people, too. It's not just like one demographic. So it's just kind of interesting that we're kind of going back to some of this stuff. So we've engaged the student body in lots of different ways. Community Service Club, I'll just kind of go through this list. Throughout the years, students are getting their credit after school, they kind of come out and spend time in the garden. The Urban Ag Class has really become kind of our main bread and butter. So I don't know if you guys know, there's four Urban Ag classes, about sixty students. So they came out to the garden for one day a week in season, for one block period. And so I help co-teach, co-teach the class with the teachers, there's two teachers. And that's really kind of a cutting-edge program, there's not many schools, there's not many schools in the area that can, that have this facility, have this amount of space, have this, I mean, it's arguably one of the premier high school garden programs, surprisingly or not. And so the class just really kind of helped to emphasize that. That started off with one class, two classes, now it's four. So, that's really good news. Special Ed Transition, folks come out, a lot of times what we'll do is we'll teach the teacher some basic things to do in the garden, and then they'll kind of help facilitate with their students kind of different garden tasks. Senior Studies, countless senior studies students throughout the years have come out and studied and volunteered and kind of taken us on as a project. Fun little fact, so last year was our first apple cider press. And if you hadn't, if you haven't had fresh apple cider, you're not living, I don't know what to say. But, so all, all the classes did this, so they took the blemished apples from our orchard, and we mashed them and pressed them. And then all the students actually drank it right on sight, and it was like super, the students were super engaged. It was kind of really good, clean fun, so. We hope to kind of keep doing that as years go on.
Yeah, they said it was the best day of their life.
That's what I, that's what I said.
That's what you said.
I have a very boring life, that'd be cool.
Oh, sorry.
So we also work in janitorial construction, I think we're missing a slide, that's, or a picture.
Wait, there, yeah, we are.
So they've helped us throughout the years, build compost bins, helped us build the pergola. Whenever there's like a new raised bed that needs to be rebuilt, because it gets rotten, they kind of come out and help us do that. So they've been a good partner over the years.
Sorry, I don't know what happened to those pictures.
Craft Design Club, so they made all of our logos, and they do flyers for different events that we put on throughout the years. And so these are kind of outside partnerships. Do you guys all know Village Farm Stand in Evanston? So it's basically a brick-and-mortar farmers' market, three sixty-five days a year. They source from local farmers all throughout the area. And so we've become partners with them. So as part of our CSA, we've offered supplemental things from them. So you can get your eggs, you can get your protein, you can get your fruits from them as an add-on to our CSA. And what that does is makes the CSA much more robust. So it's almost like a one-stop shop. So folks that get the CSA don't have to go to the grocery store for as much things, right? And it's all locally sourced, all ethical. So they've been a big partner of ours, starting last year. What was cool as well is we started selling produce to them when we had extras, so if we didn't go to the cafeteria or didn't go to the CSA, they sold it for us. And they marketed it as ETHS produce. It had really good sales, because we had the cuteness factor of being from ETHS. But all seriousness, our produce was at a quality that was pretty, pretty good, pretty high, right? So they were really enthusiastic about that. Kim kind of already spoke about the naturally certified certification, that was a cool thing we did. In the center is a picture of the grapes, so that's on our pergola in EA Two. So last year was our first little harvest of grapes, Concorde grapes. And those, we had actually had enough to go into the CSA boxes last year, which is cool. So that'll only continue, eventually there'll be like a total shade canopy over the whole pergola, and the students won't be in the hot sun working, right? So, and then Mayor, we can't skip over Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program. So we've been partners with them since two thousand nine. Each year, it's five to seven students in the summer, doing about fifteen hours a week, working in the garden, getting paid kind of a going rate for that, for that job. And that's been a really good program for students to kind of get their hands dirty, kind of in a more professional way. So they're kind of getting hands-on life experience. So this summer, we'll have seven students, they're all signed up to go. That's been a really good partnership over the years.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then speaking of the CSA and seedling sale, it'll be our fifth year doing the seedling sale and our eighth year doing the CSA. So there's some fun pictures of that. And there's the Village Farm Stand add-ons. And there we have cute stickers, and we really try to put some extra effort and touches into it. The, the CSA and seedling sale both brought in about twenty thousand dollars in revenue, which is really helpful just to help us kind of subsidize what's happening and having this wonderful, knowledgeable man with us to help with this program. So it, it really helps with subsidize that a bit. The path ahead is we just want to purchase more local and market that accordingly. So, we were fortunate enough to, through Matt and the Matt at Village Farm Stand, meet a man, call him, his name is Marty. He is going to be a great liaison between the farmer and us, basically, to bring in local produce to the school. Unfortunately, our state is pretty behind on a lot of that. So he's a, we're kind of, kind of going out rogue and doing our own thing, and hopefully the state can catch up with us someday. They, speaking of federal money, we did get supply chain assistance funds, is what they were called. There were federal dollars that were given to us after COVID, that were only supposed to be used for local produce, local milk, anything that's unprocessed, rice, things like that. So, that's a bonus, but hopefully that'll grow with time. And then, those are some other, really, I mean, look at that child. And that's at our greenhouse event, that's so cute. I love that one. And I have to promote the seedling sale to all of you, of course, so I hope you can make it. Those are the dates, May nineteenth, May twentieth, in the South Cafe Courtyard. We used to have a pre-order, but we're unable to do that this year, but in the future, we will. You never know what happens with nature, sometimes you don't have that capability. And lastly, I just wanted to thank the board and the district for being such a support for this program throughout the years and allowing us the flexibility to even have it, it's very unique, especially in the Midwest. So, I feel very grateful and, and just very proud of where we've gone. And I just really want to thank Matt publicly, too, because without him, we would not have this program. Because there's a lot of schools everywhere that don't have a sustainable program put in place. And they want to, but then the parents come on and then they leave, and you know how that all goes. So we're, we're very fortunate to have somebody that's, that's here that is fully committed to this program and as we are, so. Thank you. Any questions?
Could you put those dates up again for that seedling sale?
Oh, yes.
I can't see them, May nineteenth?
May nineteenth and May twentieth.
Okay.
It's a Friday and a Saturday, so the Saturday morning and then Friday afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Right, this was great.
Fun stuff.
So informative. All right, board, any questions or comments? It's all, it's all pretty amazing. It's, I'm, I'm thinking about just all this, this, these great opportunities for students to learn. And I love the way you talked about the different classes and, and, you know, how they, geometry and construction and, and the, just the different opportunities for, for our kids. That's great. That's just really excellent. Yeah.
Yeah, we drive by the, you know, Edible Acre, and we, oh, that's so cool that we have that. But we have so much more than we realized, given this presentation, so it's really amazing. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, this really exceeded my expectations, the work you're doing is really cool. I'm so glad to, to see this focus on nutrition and the, the knowledge and the education around healthy eating is, is so important for our students. I was just wondering if you have any details you can give us about the CSA, and is it too late to sign up?
No, I, actually, I should have put that up as well. No, it's not, we have, I think, four spots left.
Oh, and then where do we find information about that?
I can send it, I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll send it to all of you if you're interested. And please follow, like, give it to friends and family, too. About this as well, seedling sale.
Yeah, that's good. All right, well, thank you again, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, lots of applause tonight. Good night. Good night. All right, so now we're at the district goals discussion. Yes, I know, it's really late. So, I guess what I want to say about this is this won't be the last discussion that we're having around this. And we don't have to make huge decisions, I know you just got it today. It's redlined kind of big time. So I don't really mind if we delay this discussion. And when we meet again in June, we'll, we'll allot more time, because this is a big decision, and it's, it's too big to rush. So, I got it, I think, late morning, I think I sent it to you by the time I realized it was on my computer. And it's just, it's a lot to take in, it's good, I think it's really good. Monica tried to reflect all of the feedback that she received when we met last month. And we met for a couple of hours, as you remember. And I think she did a, a good job. Most of the changes or, or proposed language was for Goal One and Goal Two. And I remember every conversation that we had, we spent a lot of time on Goal One and Goal Two. So I want you to keep that in mind as you look at them. She also made some, I thought, good suggestions for Goal Three. So just take a look at it, and if you don't mind, we'll have a board conversation about it later. And if you want to start doing your own, taking your own notes, I know Gretchen, you said that you.
Sorry, I, I didn't know that, I felt under pressure to respond to what we got this afternoon. So I was, I was like, okay, I'll look, and I was having a hard time with the redlining. So I just, so I just sort of removed it. And then I discovered the Google Doc, and, and so then I went, oh, and I went into the Google Doc and I put the revisions in there. So anyway, that was all done in haste, because I thought we were under pressure to have the conversation tonight. So anyway.
I'm sorry, I mean, I didn't realize we would.
No, 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 it was no big deal, I just, it was, I was sitting there, it all popped in, and I'm like, okay, then.
Okay, good, good. All right, so everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Great. Okay. So the Code of Conduct and the Board Agreements. We decided to wait until the board was re, had, the reorganization of the board before we presented the Code of Conduct and the Board of Agreements. And if you, you probably don't recall, at our last board retreat, we talked briefly about the Code of Conduct and the Board Agreements. So what, what I'd like you to do is just, again, take a look at those. It's, the, these are important documents, because they essentially tell us how to do, how to behave, how to do our work. And we are a governing board, and this code, for this Code of Conduct to work, all board members need to uphold the expectations described in this document. So, they are posted over there by the door, because they're that important, that we should remember the Code of Conduct. So, read through them, and just remember, we still, I, I still love that whole team of eight. And now we have a new member of our team, but we are a team of eight, seven. And now we have a new member of our team, but we are a team of eight, seven Board members and the superintendent. And for this team to work well, we have to, we have to, we have to be respectful, this like respectful dissent when we need to, and share our perspectives and listen to one another. So those things are important, so. Anything else about the Code of Conduct? Okay. All right, so now we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. What a good night. So let me start by congratulating our seniors, right? The ETHS class of 2023, if you can believe it, they were freshmen when the COVID pandemic hit in the March of 2020. And now this is their final week of classes at ETHS. Seniors send-off is this Thursday. Prom is this weekend at Davie Pier. And graduation is on Sunday, May 21st at 10:00 a.m. at Welsh Ryan Arena. Graduation will be livestreamed on the ETHS YouTube channel. We recently shared with our students in grades nine through 11 the schedule for their last week of school. The last day for students is Friday, May 26th, which will be a noon dismissal, and ETHS Summer School kicks off June 1st. And our final community talkback of the year is Tuesday, May 23rd, from 6:30 to 7:30 at the YWCA Evanston North Shore. In light of the current conversations about community safety, the focus on, of the May 23rd event will be violence prevention and intervention strategies in our community. And lastly, congratulations to the freshman boys track who came in second place tonight at the CSL Conference Meet. Several individuals and relay teams took first place in various events. So congratulations to freshman boys track tonight, and that concludes my report.
Well, that's a hat off to the first. All right. Okay.
We normally don't have a student, a brand, we have a, so, you know. Yeah. You're okay.
I have a little something, but it's not, not much.
Okay, go ahead then.
I just want to say, you know, it's AP testing season. I personally have a couple tests, but there's a lot of stress in the air, so students are cramming, as per usual. And also, I'm really sad, and I can speak for a lot of my junior friends and sophomore friends and freshman friends, we're really sad to see the seniors go. It's kind of weird that, you know, they're going to be gone in like four days, and that's the end of their high school career. And then thinking about next year for my class, the juniors were like, wow, you know, post-high school planning, am I right? But that's pretty much it. And then for the Student Union, Dr. Kinsey came to our last meeting to talk with us about Goal Two concerning mental health and like 504 and IEP plans, and also plans for the next year as we work on increasing that communication and promoting transparency between our student body and then all of you all and other administration at our school. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Nicole. And I have a little something for you as well tonight, so I just want to make sure I get it to you. Otherwise, I may take it home myself. All right, let's do our action items. So the first item is approval of Pride Month resolution, and Gretchen's going to read that for us.
Yes, I will. Lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month 2023 excerpts from past proclamation by President Joseph R. Biden Jr. Whereas the uprising at the Stonewall Inn in June 1969 sparked a liberation movement, a call to action that continues to inspire us to live up to our nation's promise of equality, liberty, and justice for all. Whereas pride is a time to recall the trials the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ plus community has endured and to rejoice in the triumphs of trailblazing individuals who have bravely fought and continue to fight for full equality. Whereas the LGBTQ plus community in America has achieved remarkable progress since Stonewall. Whereas historic Supreme Court rulings in recent years have struck down regressive laws, affirmed the right to marriage equality, and secured workplace protections for LGBTQ plus individuals in every state and territory. Whereas for all of our progress, there are many states in which LGBTQ plus individuals still lack protections for fundamental rights and dignity in hospitals, schools, public accommodations, and other spaces. Whereas our nation continues to witness a tragic spike in violence against transgender women of color in particular. LGBTQ plus individuals, especially youth who defy sex or gender norms, face bullying and harassment in educational settings and are at a disproportionate risk of self-harm and death by suicide. Whereas we recognize the resilience and determination of the many individuals who are fighting to live freely and authentically. Whereas we affirm our obligation to uphold the dignity of all people and dedicate ourselves to protecting the most vulnerable among us. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Evanston Township High School District 202 recognizes the month of June 2023 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month, and celebrates the achievement of the LGBTQ plus community and the great diversity of the American people.
Thank you. Thank you, Gretchen. Can I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Good luck, Lisa. Roll call, please.
Montzal.
Yes.
Carson.
Yes.
Pete Carr.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. The consent agenda consists of approval of Amendment International Travel for 2324, Belize, and the China trip, approval of bid for painting services contract, approval of minutes for the regular enclosed sessions from April 17th, 2023, approval of bills and personnel report.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Parsons.
Yes.
Pete Carr.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
Livingstone.
Yes.
Montzal.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, is there any old or new business?
I have old and new business.
All right.
Surprise, surprise. This is just a simple recognition, well, not a simple recognition, but an important one. From the Illinois Association of School Boards, it says, Dear Dr. Campbell, at the North Cook Division Meeting on March 15th, the North Cook Executive Committee was recognized for serving the division during the 2123 term. As Pat Savage-Williams could not attend, please acknowledge her service as the North Cook Director-at-Large at your next scheduled Board meeting. The Illinois Association of School Boards sincerely appreciates her service to the division. One regards.
Thank you. A little surprise. Put one on me. Thank you, Ted. Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. Polling of the Board, any other comments what would like to make? Welcome, Leah. Welcome to the Board table.
Welcome.
All right, can we have a motion for adjournment, please?
I move for adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned.